Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of November 27th, 2008. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman here. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Castleberry.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson, here. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Carter, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hickman.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is approval of the City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee minutes of September 27th, City Council Conference Minutes of October 11th, and City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of November 13th, 2018. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. For proclaiming Saturday, December 1st, 2018, as World AIDS Day in the city of Norman, I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming December 1st, 2018, as World AIDS Day in the city of Norman, whereas World AIDS Day was founded in 1988 and takes place on December 1st of every year, and whereas World AIDS Day was the first ever global health day, and its recognition provides an opportunity to increase awareness, unite in the fight against HIV, show support for people living with HIV, and to remember those who have died from AIDS-related illnesses. And whereas 2018 is the 30th anniversary of World AIDS Day, and this year's theme is Know Your Status, which focuses upon the improvement needed to reach the one in seven people in the U.S. currently living with HIV who do not know their status so that they can be linked to quality care and prevention services. And whereas HIV testing is essential for expanding treatment and ensuring that all people living with HIV can lead healthy and productive lives, and whereas many barriers to HIV testing remain, including stigma, discrimination, and access to confidential testing, which often deter people from being tested. And whereas self-testing, community-based testing, and multi-disease testing are some of the many new ways of expanding access and helping people know their HIV status, and whereas World AIDS Day helps raise awareness about the importance of knowing one's status and working towards removal of all barriers to accessible HIV testing. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2018, as World AIDS Day in the city of Norman, and encourage all citizens to work towards increasing awareness and promoting accessible testing. And I think we have Andrew Coulter, who is the president of Norman Pride, if you'll come forward to the dais. Thank you so much for being here.
Yes.
And do you have a few words you want to say?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, hello, it's on, okay.
You need to face the council.
Faces, okay.
There you go.
I just wanted to thank the city of Norman, the mayor, and everybody in Norman that has been with us trying to push change in Norman and things like that through the Norman Pride. We had our first ever festival this year in Norman through, and then next year it's coming up in May, 3rd, 4th, and 5th also. We have a gala coming up this Saturday. It's for World AIDS Day. It'll be at the Sooner Theater Studio for $25 a ticket. $3 of every ticket's being donated to the Oklahoma AIDS Fund, along with a dollar of every drink purchased. And then we have a silent auction, and half of every dollar raised from the silent auction is also being donated back to them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five is a proclamation proclaiming Monday, December 10th, 2018, as Human Rights Day in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. A proclamation of the mayor of the city on December 10th, the day in 1948 that the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and whereas this year marks the 70th anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, a milestone document that proclaimed the inalienable rights which everyone is inherently entitled to as a human being regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political, or other opinion, national or social origin, property, birth, or other status. And whereas Human Rights Day celebrates these universal values, including a common standard of achievement for all peoples and all nations that establishes the equal dignity and worth of every person. And whereas while it promises are yet to be fully realized, this longstanding document is testament to the enduring universality of its perennial values of equality, justice, and human dignity. And whereas Human Rights Day reminds us that our shared humanity is rooted in these universal values relevant to all of us every day, and encourages us all to stand up for our own rights as well as those of others. And whereas by taking action in our own daily lives, we can uphold the rights that protect us all and thereby promote the kinship of all human beings. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2018, as Human Rights Day in the city of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in reflecting on the importance of these values and how they may impact each of our lives every day. And I believe Andrew Coulter's coming up for this one, too.
Okay, you've had your first run.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, do you want to say anything?
I'm not new to this, sorry. Definitely just thank you guys again for everything that the city of Norman has really done for Norman Pride, and really backing us and being there, supporting us. You guys were, a lot of you were in the parade as well, walking with us. Bray Clark was our head of the parade with us, with her sister. So it's really been an honor to kind of push Norman forward and help everybody out and bring a major change. And then we're also, this coming year, for the next Pride Festival, we're actually going to have it on Campus Corner and on Main Street, combining both aspects of Norman together. So we're really excited. So thank you.
Thank you. Item six is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items seven through 49 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number seven is ordinance upon requesting special use for mixed building for property located at 205 East Main Street, currently Zoned C3 Intensive Commercial. Item eight is an ordinance upon first reading amending the PUD established by ordinance 00203-2 as amended by 0506-900607-13 and 01415-45 for 1820 Legacy Park Drive. Item nine is an ordinance upon first reading rezoning property located at 700 College Avenue from our 2-2 family dwelling district to our M2 low-density apartment district with special use for fraternity or sorority house. Item 10 is an ordinance upon first reading establishing individual and business licensing for the possession and use of marijuana as permitted by state law, adding permitted and special uses to the zoning ordinance to allow for the location of marijuana establishments in conformance with state law, adding definitions and other related provisions, and to establish a public nuisance as the creation and failure to prevent the emanation of noxious odors, light, or noise beyond property boundaries. Item 11 is submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report of October 31st. Item 12, submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of October 2018. Item 13 is a consideration of a bid contract and bonds with Lane Christensen Company in the amount of $4,714,421.72 for the 2018 groundwater wellfield development project. Item 14 is a special claim submitted by Antol at Norman in the amount of $6,034.84 for damage to a metal swing gate as a result of an incident with a sanitation truck at 3700 West Tecumseh Road on October 24th, 2018. Item 15 is a change order number 11 to a contract with Flintco LLC, increasing the contract amount by $277,298 for a revised contract amount of $26,437, 814 for fabrication and installation of the public art piece for the Norman Forward Central Library Project and budget appropriation from the Norman Forward Fund balance. Item 16 is amendment number one to a contract with EST, increasing the contract amount by $230,659 for a revised contract amount of $399,459 to proceed with Phase Two of the final design services for the Cedar Lane Road project from Black Locus Court to 36th Avenue Southeast. Item 17 is amendment number one to a contract, a memorandum of understanding with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services regarding the leasing and right of first refusal to purchase real property, namely 160 acres more or less located at the northwest corner of 12th Avenue Northeast and East Robinson Street. Item 18 is change order number two to a contract with Central Contracting Services, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $16,393.47 for a revised contract amount of $1,563,869.47 to complete the recycling pad at the East Norman Recycling Center as part of the Urban Concrete Pavement Street Maintenance Bond Program contract. Item 19 is a contract with the Ball Clubs of Norman, formerly Norman Youth Baseball Academy, for the use of the Griffin Park baseball softball fields for the purpose of organizing and providing youth baseball and softball programs for the city of Norman for a period of five years. Item 20 is a contract with Oklahoma City Landfill, Southeast Landfill, to provide solid waste disposal services for the city of Norman through August 31st, 2023. Item 21 is a contract with Oklahoma City Landfill, DBA Southeast OKC Landfill, to provide shared revenues from the sale of landfill gas in conjunction with the solid waste disposal services for the city of Norman. Item 22 is a contract with Allied Waste Systems, DBA, Republic Services of Oklahoma City, to provide residential curbside recycling services for the city of Norman through August 31, 2023. Item 23 is a contract for a dockless scooter revocable license agreement with Slider LLC in the amount of $300 per year, allowing deployment of no more than 150 dockless scooters within the public rights of way, providing for administrative fleet size increases and decreases, and providing for penalties in the event of default or violation of the parking parameters. Item 24 through 46 are Social and Voluntary Services Commission request for funding. 24 Aging Services of Cleveland County for $5,020. Item 25 Among Friends Activity Centers, $9,500. 26 Assistant League of Norman, $4,000. 27 Bethesda, $10,500. Item 28 Big Brothers and Big Sisters, $6,080. Item 29 Bridges, $9,700. Item 30 with Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Oklahoma City, $5,000. Item 31 with the Center for Children and Families for $12,500. Item 32 with Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, $1,000. Item 33 with Cleveland County CASA for $3,400. Item 34 Community After School Program, $9,000. Item 35 Community Services Building, $12,500. Item 36 with Food and Shelter, $14,000. Item 37 Full Circle Adult Daycare, $5,000. Item 38 with Heartline 211, $2,500. Item 39 Infant Crisis Services, $2,000. Item 40 Mary Abbott's Children's House, $10,000. Item 41 Meals on Wheels for $10,000. Item 42 NAIC, the Virtue Center for $14,000. Item 40, that was, item 42. Item 43 Norman Day School for Handicapped Children Project Outreach, $5,000. Item 44 with Salvation Army, $12,700. Item 45 with Thunderbird Clubhouse Board, $5,600. Item 47 with Transition House for $6,000. Item 47 is a resolution declaring that the City Council, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Utilities Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting scheduled for December 92, I'm sorry, scheduled for December 25th, 2018 shall be canceled. Item 48 Resolution Giving the Secretary of the Cleveland County Election Board Notice of the Municipal and Municipal Runoff Elections for 2019. Item 49 is a resolution settlement of workers' compensation commission case H. Michael G. Hale versus the city of Norman in the amount of $24,305.75. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
At this time, I would like to recognize Ken
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Ken Kaminski. I'm director of utilities. I'm just here to bring some update information to item 13, or some background information. We started as a council and as a city looking for additional water in 2012, just because we knew we needed more water to supply for our city. So with that, we had at least 14 public meetings, and as a council and as a public, we put together our strategic water supply plan that was adopted by the city in 2014. The plan looked at every aspect of trying to get more water to the city. We left no stone unturned and put together different portfolios of water supplies with wells and surface water and different options. The city and the council and the community recommended portfolio number 14 as the one to move forward. Portfolio 14 included obviously using and continuing using Lake Thunderbird. Lake Thunderbird essentially is tapped out, so we have no more additional water from Lake Thunderbird. It also included in the next 50 years to provide more conservation measures up to the amount of about 2 million gallons a day worth of conservation measures. And then what we're going to talk about tonight, one of the big items, is to expand the groundwater supply, an additional 2 million gallons per day. In addition to that, we were going to look at some of the wells that we had to close down for arsenic or chromium, and how we can treat them and put them back in service. And then a big-ticket item for the long haul, or the long look, would be implement indirect potable reuse to supply a lot of water in the future. But we're talking about the wellfield development. So the citizens with that supply plan, knowing how we're going to move forward, approved a rate hike in January of 2015 to the waterfront. The rate hike, or the increase in water rates, provided additional fundings to do the Phase Two of our water treatment plant renovation. That's that $33 million project that's ongoing right now, and to supply, or to provide funding for the 2 million gallons of additional water supply. That's what we're talking about So the wellfield development that we did, we looked at Corolla Engineers to select a wellfield development plan. There's a lot of hydrogeologic information that has to be put together, where the water is, as far as whether it's finding sweet spots and looking at the Garber Wellington aquifer. So the end product is we need about 10 wells to produce the additional 2 million gallons a day. This is just a map of the city of Norman, mostly the west end, the western side with the urban area, and then you can see all the wells moving further to the east side, all those little dots. We try to keep them at least a half a mile away from each other. So with that, we did some prequalifications for well drillers. We did that earlier this year. So the price and the bid that we have was to provide 10 test wells and then six permanent wells. We looked at 45 sites to where these wells might be located. We need at least 10 potential well sites. There's also, in addition, we're going to be looking, and we've talked to the council before, about a horizontal well that will be coming forward under a separate contract. So the project was advertised. We received two bids. The winning bid was with Lane Christensen for $4,700,000. And so that's what this is in front of you for tonight.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kaminski? Councilmember Castleberry.
Ken, what was the cost of the last round of wells we drilled? Do you remember?
I think we budgeted about $10 million.
And how many wells was that?
That was also for about 10 wells.
So about a million dollars a well, roughly?
By the time you do all the hydraulics and the pipes connecting everything together, too, because, again, we're keeping these wells a half a mile apart, and so we have to bring it all into the city.
So this is 4.7 million for six wells. I mean, you got them, I'm not counting the test wells, because those aren't going to be completed. So that's about $785,000 per well.
That's correct.
So
But this, again, does not include the piping.
Piping.
To get it back into town.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wilson.
Hi, Ken. Thanks for working on this. I have a couple of questions that get asked of me, so I just wanted to ask them on the record. I think you've answered them before, but one of them is, will the drilling of these wells and the use of these wells compromise the residential wells in the area? And tell me why, because, for the record, I guess.
Okay, no, that's a very logical question, because we get asked that a lot, too, especially if you ask a property owner for use of their property so we can drill a well. Domestic wells are usually in the 100, maybe 150-foot range, something of that nature, and the aquifer has different layers of sandstone and shale, and so it's actually different layers of aquifer. And so we're going into the Garber Wellington, which is below that, so we will be drilling, we will not take water above the 300-foot mark. So our wells will be going, the bid that we have now is to drill essentially holes in the ground up to 750 feet deep, looking for water. Sometimes we can get water at 400, 500, 600, 700 feet deep, things of that nature. But there's, there's a confining layer between our aquifer and the water we use and the domestic wells.
And I have one follow-up question. Will be, are you having success finding the land that, and people are willing to sell it to the city or use?
That's a process. As we mentioned, we looked at 46 different potential areas, and that's with our hydrogeologic information. You know, we don't want to just go out and put a hole in the ground. We want to try to find a sweet spot when it has a potential of providing good quality and quantity water. We're working with a number of property owners now. We could always use more that are willing to work with us. We won't turn anybody down, let's put it that way, but we're working on getting it, getting our 10 wells.
Okay, and then one specific additional question. Would we use eminent domain in that situation?
No, we have never used eminent domain for that, and we have no intention of going for it. We still have enough property owners that are willing to work with us and get compensated for our use of their land.
Thank you. Any other questions of Ken?
Okay, thank you.
Any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Councilmember Castleberry.
One comment and then one question on item 10. I know that's first reading, but I think when it comes forward, next, next meeting, we need to seriously consider postponing that. I think with the lawsuit in Tulsa and some of the other state law questions, I'm not sure that we should go forward with the marijuana zoning and stuff like that, but I wanted us to seriously consider whether it's premature for us to do those rules or not. On item 19, I have a couple of questions for Judd. This is the contract for the youth baseball, and I know we went through this, last time I had some questions on it, last time we did. So I know we're renewing this one. So could you tell me a little bit about who is the Ball Club of Norman? I know we've done it with the Optimus Club. Is this a new organization, or?
Is it, yes, a different group. Excuse me, it's Judd Foster, Parks and Recreation Director. And Ball Clubs of Norman organized about four years ago under the name of the Norman Youth Baseball Academy. Their purpose was to provide training facilities and training opportunities for the youth in the area, and that's what they've been doing.
Okay, so what's our, the city's history with them? You said about four years ago. Have they run some leagues for us? Have we had any complaints, or?
Not complaints. The, the, our interaction, I guess you would say, with these groups, with Ball Clubs of Norman, or formerly NYBA, has been working with them on coaching clinics. We've had coaches in our leagues go and attend clinics, also players from our leagues, and then they've organized some teams that have, excuse me, have participated in our leagues before. So we have an association that way.
So is this in addition to our leagues, or are they taking over our leagues?
They're going to take over the operation of leagues, of our leagues, yes.
Okay, and so I think last time we did a three-year contract, and this is a five-year contract. Is it, talk to them about that?
All the other contracts are five years. Actually, it's technically, I guess, it's a one-year contract. It renews automatically annually for a five-year period, a five-year term. We do that, and we have, that's consistent with the other sports organizations.
Football, basketball.
And we do that because they have significant investments in either equipment, or field improvements, or improvements to the facilities, or even maintenance equipment. And, and we want to give them some time to recoup that.
So as part of this, basically taking over our leagues to help us kind of run this, we're giving them some equipment?
No, we're not giving them any equipment. We're, we actually, we have some baseball equipment, baseball and softball equipment, that we're, in a sense, we are selling to them.
Right, because we're not giving it to them.
Brand-new equipment, actually, that we lost in a fire. And so it's new, and we have value to it, and we have offered it to them, since we won't be using it or needing it for that, for that age group anymore, on a depreciating, pardon me, a depreciating basis. So we're going to depreciate it $4,000 a year, as long as they use it. And then after five years, they don't owe us anything for it.
But after five years, I mean, they're not going to pay us anything if
If they stay five
Everything stays good over five years and that kind of stuff. I was a little bit concerned that, now, is this more of a recreational league, or is this traveling league, or, you know, how do the, you know, the kind of recreational baseball players, as opposed to the competitive traveling? I want to make sure my
I guess I would say it's both. It's a recreational league in nature, very similar, very much like ours were. Their rules will be a little more competitive than ours probably were, but the, the teams will be formed and participate in league play. They will have the opportunities to play in tournaments and travel to tournaments if they choose. That's not required, of course, and that'll be an option for the teams.
But will every, every kid in Norman can sign up and play, or do you have to be selected on a team, or can I just, I might get out there and get assigned a team if they, if they don't have something for them, or, you know, and what are the, what do you You know, and what are the, what do you anticipate the cost to be? I want to make sure, you know, everybody has a chance to participate if they can.
Sure. Great question. The, first of all, as far as, they have indicated they'll scholarship kids that can't afford the fees. The fee structure is essentially the same as ours has been. It varies, it's lower for the younger ages and it gets a little higher as the older the kids get. But it varies from about $45. There's a list of it in the book, but in the, from $45 to $85 depending on the age. But any child that qualifies for the free and reduced lunch program can be scholarshiped. And that's exactly the way we used to do it. And their, their fees for, the playing fees are the same as what we offer.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Hi, Judd. While you're up there, I think item number 17 might be the MOU with the Department of Mental Health. Can you tell us a little bit about that? My understanding is that's for the land at Griffin Park where the soccer complex is, is that right?
It is. And, and if I may, I would probably be best to defer this to legal. Beth Muckler wrote this and, and postured this, so if I can, I'll pass that off.
Yes, sir. No problem.
I think Beth, I understand you have a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Yes, anticipating some potential questions, we do have a rundown of the agreement.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
There we go. So this was brought to you back in June 26, the original agreement. And we explained then that this, of course, addresses the Norman Forward projects, one of them being soccer complex expansion. And land acquisition was planned in placeholder funds in the amount of $10 million, which included this land, which is the Griffin Park land located at Robinson and 12th on the north side. And also there was a placeholder of 500,000 relating to land acquisition for adult football and softball fields. The prior discussions, which relates to the MOU when it was brought to you in June, was for acquisition, as I mentioned, but then it evolved into long-term lease agreements. And we brought that negotiated MOU as contract, K-1718136, which was approved on June 26. And it involves both this 160 acres at Griffin Park as well as 40 acres at the southeast corner of 24th and Robinson. And those 40 acres were, saw as a potential site for the adult facilities that we were discussing. Following June 26, additional discussions with the Department of Mental Health evolved into they're asking us to focus instead on the Griffin Park land at this time. And so in addition, there were further refinements that were suggested to the agreement, and I'll get to those on the next slide. But essentially, those additional discussions and negotiations evolved into an amendment to that MOU, which the Department of Mental Health has taken to their real property trust board. They did that on November 16, and they approved that updated version of the MOU on that day. So this is a comparison of those two agreements. And as you can see, the general structure is the same. On both occasions, we're talking about a 15-year lease with a 15-year renewal for a total of 30 years at the city's option. And there's an option, right of first refusal to purchase when the Department of Mental Health is ready to have those discussions. And of course, right of first refusal language also anticipates situations where we would be able to engage in conversations begun by third parties. So rental funds in both cases are to be applied against a future purchase. In this amended version, there's a little more language about due diligence, lease signability, a little more specifics with respect to the right of first refusal, notice and execution parameters. So there's a little more language in that regard. The 24th Avenue Robinson land for the adult facilities has been removed per that request from the department. And like the other version you saw on June 26, it also sets aggressive deadlines for getting this deal, getting the lease considered, getting it back and done preferably by year's end, if not before. So that's the land we're talking about. It's north of Robinson but south of the Sutton Wilderness land. Now, here's a cost summary, similar to what you've seen before. But the cost summary is the same for this parcel. We're still talking about an annual rental of 80,000. And as you can see, we've compared that against the $10 million placeholder funds planned in Norman Forward. And you can see it in the lease allocation for the life, the remaining life of Norman Forward equals 8.96 million. The initial term itself is 15 years, 8.8 million. And then both lease terms for 30 years equals, oh, I'm sorry. Those are the remaining funds. For 13 years, under the remaining life of Norman Forward, you have an expense of 1.04 million. And then for the 15-year first term, 1.2 million. For the full two terms, 30 years total, 2.4 million. And so you can see the remaining placeholder funds that are left in place there for each one of those scenarios as well. I might add that this $10 million placeholder funds originally contemplated acquisitions, including Sutton Wilderness and Cape Park. And those are not involved in this MOU here. We are just talking about the Griffin land. And so SaaS recommendation is that this Amendment 1 to K-1718136 be approved. And then we'll move aggressively to get a lease by December 14, then no later than the end of the year. It's anticipated that city manager, as last time on June 26, when we were here, city manager would have lease execution upon terms that are consistent with those in this MOU. I'm available to answer any additional questions.
Yes, thank you very much for the, the presentation. So just so I'm clear, if we secure this, with this MOU, we will have somewhat of a written agreement that the Department of Mental Health is going to negotiate in good faith a lease agreement with us. Is that right?
Absolutely, yes. It sets the terms going forward that we'll see in the lease. Now, the due diligence language and additional language in the MOU, I think it's in your materials, does specify that, of course, there will be other terms in a larger, more comprehensive lease agreement.
Okay. And we feel like if we get this lease signed, it will satisfy the Norman Forward requirement of acquiring the Griffin Park land on the long-term basis so that council can continue to invest in the soccer complex and meet the obligations to the, the voters for the Norman Forward acquisition of that Griffin Park land. Is that right?
Yes, and that was the purpose of negotiating this long-term lease of a total of 30 years.
And the Sutton Wilderness Park, if I understand correctly, is already on a, a long-term lease that even if we don't acquire it, it is secured for the city for 2078 or a long-term lease, is that right?
You're correct. A $20 a year long-term lease.
Okay. I would just like to request of the city manager and legal staff, whatever, that we, upon execution of that lease, that we have a resolution prepared to bring to council that would identify and allocate that remaining $7.6 million to be, to be identified to be for the budget for a standalone senior citizen center. Since the 2015 Norman Forward bond did not include a budget for the senior center, that we take some official action to earmark and, and set aside, if you will, those remaining $7.6 million from this $10 million that was initially allocated for the acquisition. But now we can secure that property through a long-term lease so that we have something officially in writing and creating a budget for a standalone senior center. And those dollars are then protected and secured for that purpose. And I don't, I don't know if that's something that other council members agree with, but I think that would be something worthwhile for us to be able to take action on as a council. So thank you for your presentation. I don't know if there are other questions of her. I do have another comment or question I wanted to ask, so I don't know if I should yield the floor for other questions.
There's no questions.
Well, I guess I just had a, a statement really. On items 24 through 46, I wanted to thank the Social and Voluntary Services Commission for their hard work with all of our local nonprofits and identifying these funds to support these local nonprofits. And for the opportunity for me to be able to serve on the city council and support these nonprofits for our community, I think is a wonderful thing that we do for our citizens and for our community. And I just want to recognize all those great nonprofits in, in items 24 through 46 and the, the volunteers on the Social and Voluntary Services Commission for all their hard work. Thank you.
And, and just to add to the resolution idea, I think, I think we had already discussed the resolution idea. I think that's what the whole council is interested in doing. But I don't know that we want to set, set any particular amount right at, at this time until the staff tells us what, what amount we think that we're going to be able to, to glean from Norman Forward. Because I'm, I'm not sure that will be the figure. So when we get the resolution, it'll have the recommended figure, and I hope it'll be over 7.6.
And we want to make sure we work through the lease document first and get that finished to make sure that's solidified. There may be some additional costs we may have to account for. So once we get all that put together, absolutely, we'll put a resolution and then bring forward a recommendation of amount. It'll be council's decision about what amount to put in there, but we'll, we'll bring forward the recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Castleberry?
Thank you. Just kind of follow up on that, because we kind of talked about this previously. I'd also like to see the $2.4 million for the 30-year lease set aside as budgets. We want to make sure that we've got, you know, I know because Norman Forward expires in 13 years. And so we need to make sure that we have this lease fully funded and set aside as kind of a escrow account or a holding account, however you want to put that. So we know we've got the money for that. And then whatever is left over, I'd like to see that amount. Councilman Hickman, put that on there. As we've talked about this for several months now, and so I'm glad to see this is finally coming through. And I know it's been a long process, and I know the seniors have been very patient. Well, not really that patient, but as patient as you can be. And this was kind of part of the long-term financing plan to do this. And so I'm glad we're going to, we're going to be able to find a way to kind of fund this. So, good job, guys.
Motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Item 50 is an ordinance rezoning 103 West Apache Street from the Center City Form Base Code to city plan to unit development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
There are seconds. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a representative? Yes, right there.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me this evening and hearing this, this item. My name is Peter Petromelli. I'm with Garner Crossing Phase Two. And I guess basically, we're here tonight just to ask for a couple of variances in the zoning on the southeast corner of, I guess it's the north, or south, the northeast, northwest corner of Apache and James Garner Avenue. We are proposing a mixed-use development on that corner. It's, has a first floor retail and then three, three units above that of residential. And the reason we're here this evening is to discuss, or at least try to ask for the variances that would allow us to retail on the first floor. The, the setback and the standard lot size of 50 feet and the setback that we have on the, on the south side that goes to Apache would create a, a proportion on the first floor that would create somewhat of an odd configuration for a retail space. And so it would be just a little bit too large for one and extremely tight for two retail spaces. And so encroaching that, that setback on the south side would allow us to entice two retail tenants and try to make better use of that corner for our project. I really think that's pretty much all we're asking. There's a 12-foot height requirement on the first floor, and we've asked to have it reduced to 10. There was a precedent for that, and it seemed to fit our space well. So I guess if anybody has any questions?
Questions? Okay, Councilmember Hickman, and then Councilmember Carter. Oh, okay. You're, yeah, okay.
Hey, Peter. A couple of questions for you. On the, the part that fronts on James Garner, is the building, my recollection was that the requirement was that the building be brought up to the bill line, to the property line. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so on Apache, is that not the same requirement? Are you just, are you wanting just to bring it up to the, the property line, to the bill line like you will on James Garner?
Yes. Basically, that's all we're asking for. And, you know, when we worked on Sims and Garner, we did that, worked on that corner, it was, it was unclear at that time what that setback was off of Sims. And I guess that since then, there was, I guess it, it was determined that it was a 10-foot setback.
And I guess I'm just a little bit confused, and maybe this is more of a question for staff I can, we can talk about later. But my recollection was both that, that intersection of both on James Garner and on Apache were orange. Urban, I can't remember right, Urban something.
Urban general, yes.
Urban general. Why, why do they have different setbacks? Because they're both under the same orange color. I'm not, I guess I'm not, and maybe that's a question for staff. I'll maybe have them answer here in a minute. But I guess you were saying that that's, that is essentially what you're asking for is that even though it's both urban, general, you want to bring the building up to match on James Garner?
Right, match on Apache what we're doing on James Garner.
And so on both, or on both Apache and James Garner, you're putting mixed-use retail or restaurant?
On the first floor.
On the first floor?
Yes, the entire first floor is retail, restaurant, and possibly like a sundry-type convenience store. So.
And because it's going to be some sort of retail and not residential, you don't have to raise it then three feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we won't have the issue we had last time about the step-up stoops and being into the right of way?
Nope, none of that.
Okay. And you, you do understand that by us approving this way, proving it this way, you're, you're going to be required to put in retail, and you can't later than make it into residential?
Absolutely. We have no plan to do that. And actually, in, in giving up the 12-foot height on the first floor and going down to 10, it, it actually would prohibit us from building the three feet up inside and then changing it to residential in the future. So, you know, we've kind of purposely locked ourselves into retail in that area because I believe strongly in it, and I'm actually going to be the person who's investing in that, just as I am on the neighborhood bar next door. We're going to put in the restaurant to support that and have those two things kind of work together. So.
And the, the retail, or the, sorry, the residential that's going to be on upper floors, one of the questions that I've had folks ask me is, are those going to be rented by the bedroom or rented just on the entire floor or by apartment or whatever?
Yes, each floor is one apartment unit, and it's, each one is rented per the apartment unit. And, and just so everyone knows, that's how all of our, anything that, that our ownership group owns, that's how we lease every bit of our, our properties.
And are you agreeable, I'll say, if I refer to it as a friendly amendment to add in a statement in your PUD document that you will not rent by the room in the residential apartments? Would you be agreeable to that?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's, we just have a standard rate for those, and, and, yeah, that's fine. Our tenants, that, that model doesn't work. So I'm fine with that.
And I don't know when the appropriate time, Brenda, would be for such a friendly amendment to the PUD documents to add in a statement such as that? If I should do that now or later and let the questions continue, but I just wanted Then I would make a motion to add a statement to the Garner, the CSO Development Corporation 103 West Apache's proposed PUD, just to add in a statement that says applicant, applicant or owner, or whatever you refer to, will not rent by the room, any of the residential units.
That sounds fine.
Are you, are you agreeable with that?
Yeah, that's fine. That's, yeah, that's how we work, so it makes sense.
Sir, second.
Hold on, just a second. Any questions from council? Any questions from the audience about the amendment?
I don't have any further questions, Peter, thank you, by the way. Others may, though.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have a couple of other questions, so.
Did we vote on the amendment or?
Seeing no other questions or comments, we can vote on the amendment.
Seeing no other questions or comments, we can vote on the amendment.
All votes, all votes have been cast for the amendment, and the amendment passes unanimously. Statement will be added that the applicant will not rent by the room.
Okay, now we're back to the original rezoning request, and we have Councilmember Carter.
You answered my questions. Mine was mainly concerned about your commitment to retail, and I think you satisfactorily.
Okay, great, yeah. No, we are.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beerman.
This and the information that we were given, but why are you looking to move from 12-foot ceilings to 10-foot ceilings?
We don't see any need for a 12-foot ceiling in there. So I guess we can, we can always do them. There was a precedent set with another entity that reduced them to 10, and it seemed like it was a fitting proportion for a retail space.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, I mean. Yeah, I mean, 12, I mean, I'm an architect by education here at the University of Oklahoma, and, you know, there's 12-foot proportions probably fine, but it's a little bit odd in a space like that, so.
Sounds expensive. Cool.
But yeah.
Councilmember Holman.
Maybe, well, let me just say, would doing 12 instead of 10, would that be a deal-breaker for you? Would you not do the project because of that? I know it does cost more to, I mean, it's just two feet, but I know that.
Sure. No, there's a, there's a, I'd have to check with my structural engineer to see what the implications are. There's a, you know, there's some sheer design when we raise another two feet that we'd have to take into consideration, but, I mean, it's not like that's a deal-breaker to me.
Not against giving you that variation, it's just, you know, I was on the Center City Committee, we spent a lot of time putting these regulations together and, you know, trying to maintain that, the integrity of it the best we can. But I understand completely where you're coming from about why you don't want to do that, and I was just wondering if that is a deal-breaker for you if you didn't get it. My other question would be, I think I understand the setback issue, but I just, maybe some clarification from staff on it is, so the setback on Apache, would it still be in line with the other structures on Apache as they are brought to the build line? Or would this be further back or closer to the street than those structures? This is kind of what I'm.
Sure. I have, before Jane, if you don't mind, we have one other building on this site, and it is built to the property line.
And this building will be lined up with, is what you're asking us to let you do it so that it'll line up with?
Yes.
Is that what I understand?
That's right. And then as you move into the blue off of, further down the road, they setback.
And so if we didn't give you this variance, your building would have to be set further back than the rest of the buildings?
Well, no, just the other one on my property. It would be in a line, it would, it would line up with the other buildings that are in the blue area.
Okay. Might hear, see what Jane has to say.
Good evening, Jane Hudson, Norman Planning Department. Okay, I, I don't think I have, or maybe I do. Okay, this is a great map. So within this area, this is the orange, and up on Sims and also on Apache, those lots on the north on Sims, those buildings ended up fronting Sims. Those are residential, and in developing the regulating plan, those areas that abut the blue, which is the townhouse, it's my understanding that they were looking to continue that line. So for, for this project here, this would continue the required build line down Apache. But what he's requesting, what the applicant is requesting, is to bring this build line down to the property line. Councilmember Holman, what you asked, the applicant has, lost my mouse, but the applicant has his project north of this, which is at the property line, fronting James Garner. His building will front James Garner, and it will be at the same setback with his existing buildings.
Which is closer to the street than the other buildings. So you're asking for us to allow you to bring your building closer to the street? Just something I like, but just to clarify.
On the south side, he is.
On the south.
Already on the east side, he's allowed to bring it up to that line.
Right.
But on the south side, he's asking to bring it closer.
Okay. I, that's very clear then, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Jane, I think maybe I need, I don't know who this, but we'll start with you. So this is the second variance of this type that we've experienced in the Center City area. Is this something we need to address with the Form-Based Code? Or, or is it, I mean, is this a, I understand, I understood with Dr. Byrd's project that it was a significant change in cost to go up that extra 12 feet, I think, if I remember that correctly, because then you have to use steel instead of wood. So are we going to have an ongoing problem? Do we need to address this in the ordinance?
I don't know if we're going to have an ongoing problem, but you're correct. It's my understanding when we brought forward the first project, it was, it was an issue of cost for them to go that additional two feet, and moving forward with this project, that was our understanding as well. You know, the idea was pedestrians on the sidewalk, when they're walking past these businesses, they would have that large opening, and it was more of a welcoming. I don't know that two feet is really going to make that much difference, but that was the intent. Councilmember Holman was on the committee, probably speak to that, I wasn't, but I think that was the intent.
Interject, I guess. I would note that was our intent, partly was, you know, most of the buildings in downtown on Main Street, the older historic buildings, you know, the first floor has a significantly higher ceiling than what you would see on the second floor, and it gives those retail spaces and the restaurants just a sense of more space perhaps. And so it was really trying to keep in the spirit of the other buildings that were in this area and how they were built, when they were built. And so, and then what you mentioned about, you know, pedestrians walking by and potential shoppers and big windows that people can look in, that was our intent, from what I recall.
Yes. That was my question, is if we need to put this on future, we don't have to, doesn't have to bear into our decision tonight, but I think that if it's going to be an ongoing issue, we should probably explore it at the committee level.
You're talking about changing it?
Changing it to a 10, if that's what's going to be needed.
Councilmember Hickman.
That was actually one of my questions, so thanks for the setup. And Jane, several months back, when City Manager Lewis was here and Planning Director Connors were here, we'd had some emails and discussions about bringing the consultant back that helped us with the Form-Based Code, and we started a list of some ideas and topics and things that we needed to revisit with them. And the idea was to have them come look at some of the projects that have happened, some of the issues like these that have been raised, and do we need to start tinkering with it? Because, I mean, I know that I remember when I supported that, that I said it's a living document, which is our first time to do this. There may be things we need to change and address and update to make, one, make sure that we're getting the vision for the Form-Based Code that we thought we were getting, and two, that we're implementing something that's workable and manageable. So I don't, I don't expect you to have an answer to that question, but maybe we can dust off those old emails and some of the discussion, and, you know, I would ask that we do bring that back to the forefront, and whether it's, you know, bringing some of the cities and committee back together, or some of the small group of council members with the consultant, I think that that's something that we should certainly do. It's been about a year since that's been in place, and we've had now two projects come forward through CCPUDs. We've had others go forward just through the traditional process, and I know that there's still some frustration that it's not exactly what we thought we were getting from the vision, especially with regard to the missing middle housing, while we've tried to do things like putting in place the fire suppression requirements to, you know, to minimize the incentive to do duplexes versus apartments. I'm not sure that we're getting exactly what we thought we were getting from the missing middle housing. So I do think having that conversation with the consultants and staff and would be something positive, so I would ask that we, like I said, dust off maybe some of those emails and ideas and bring that back. I don't know if it needs to come, if it needs to come to a council committee, as the chair of the CPTC, I'm happy to put it on that committee to start the discussion. If it's a matter of just getting the consultants back in here, and maybe Councilmember Holman and myself be kind of representatives of council to meet with them and with the mayor to have some of those conversations, I'm happy to do it that way as well, but maybe that's something we can discuss, discuss offline.
Sure.
If you could go back, I did have one picture or one question. If you go back to your image that showed the actual, the buildings, the aerial photo? Yes. So if I understand correctly, that red line is where they want to have authorization to build up to.
Essentially, should be the property line, yeah. That's what we outlined from the.
And I see that existing structure that there is already built up to that line, is that right? Okay. And I have a question, I'm not sure it's for you or for Peter, but I'll ask it, Jane, maybe you can answer it. I did notice also they have permitted uses in here, outdoor, live, or recorded entertainment. I'm assuming that would be not, that would be a use that would still be subject to our noise ordinance, which would be 12 permits a year, limited by hours and time that they could do it, and decibel level and things like that.
Right. They did not ask for any variances from the noise ordinance, no.
Okay, so even though it's in here as a permitted use, it's not something extraordinary that they're getting that another restaurant or somebody would be able to get, or somebody could get, do in their backyard through a noise variance permit?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public.
Thank you.
Any comments? Are there any comments from the audience? Final comments from the?
I have some comments, and I have some questions. I can't tell you how disappointed I am to see another one of these go up. We've just lost 217 West Sims, bulldozed down to make a mini dorm, 103 West Sims bulldozed down to make another mini dorm. And I understand, he said, he's not renting by the room, but these aren't really apartments. When I first saw that it had commercial on the ground floor, I thought, finally, we're going to get real apartments, which is what was discussed when we had the Center City Form-Based Code, but then I looked at the plans, and that's not really what we're getting. I also, I think that there's supposed to be a notice for the review committee. I think these are little tiny signs or whatever, so the public can attend. So one of my questions would be, when was this? When did it go through the review process? And how would we know unless we continually drive every day through the entire core area? I have some concerns about the parking, in which it stated that they have a long-term agreement with two places for parking. How many parking spots does this include? And if they're going to have commercial, and they're going to have entertainment and turn the little stone house into a bar, how is that parking going to be accommodated? I mean, we finally got Sims down to just one side, but it is still difficult to pass through there when there are pickup trucks with large mirrors. One of my real safety concerns is I don't understand how they're allowed to park on James Garner in what I determined to be the right-of-way. If you're going east on Sims and you want to turn left on James Garner, you cannot see. You have to pull all the way out into James Garner to see if there's any traffic coming. There's been at least one accident there. I've almost been hit twice, because you can't see the cars, and they're parked on gravel. I mean, if you look to the left, you see no parking, you see nice green space, but you can't see past that. And driving past there on Sunday mornings on my way to church after a football game, it's disgusting. We had pictures of paper cups, trash just left there. And it's, it's really, it's not what I thought we were going to get when we did the Center City Form-Based area. Thank you.
Thank you. Could the applicant maybe address the parking situation that was just brought up?
Yes, we filed a, I forget the, what it's actually called, but we do have all of our parkings in place that meets the Form-Based Code requirements for parking. The neighborhood bar and restaurant, there is no parking requirements in the code for, for that type of establishment or any retail establishment in Center City. And so I think the idea behind it was that this is a neighborhood area, something similar to what you'd see at the, in Edmund, they have the Patriarch, and in Austin, they have similar venues where neighborhood people walk to these venues for, for their entertainment, whether, and their sundry items and groceries and morning coffee and things like that. And so I think that was part of the vision of the city center Form-Based Code, and it's, but we meet all their parking requirements.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Would maybe, maybe if staff, because I can't really recall the parking that was just mentioned that, that is taking place currently on, along James Garner in the city right-of-way. I can't recall if we gave a temporary variance or something for that, but the parking for those new apartments and the people parking between the street and the sidewalk along James Garner Avenue is in the right-of-way, and I can't recall if we are allowing that, if we're just looking the other way, if we're, got, I know we've talked about a long-term solution, that there would be off-street parking there at some point perhaps, but.
Thank you, Councilor Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works. The council did not allow on-street parking. In fact, council disallowed on-street parking on James Garner Avenue. So the current, I agree with Ms. Crumpley, the current on-street parking on gravel is in violation of multiple city ordinances. We've been working with Councilmember Hickman and the applicant to try to address that, but it is in violation of multiple ordinances, and it certainly wasn't the vision of Center City Form-Based Code to allow gravel on-street right-of-way parking.
In the right-of-way.
In fact, it was just the opposite. We wanted, the Form-Based Code calls for parallel parking on paved surfaces with landscaping and so on, so.
Right.
That was an issue that I think sort of happened, unfortunately, and we're trying to work to remedy that, and certainly don't want to see that in other parts of the Center City.
Are we ticketing or towing or doing any of that right now to those?
We have done some towing early on and then suspended that activity at the request of City Manager to see if we can work through a more amiable solution.
I mean, I think it makes sense for this part of the section from the street to the sidewalk along James Garner to have either angled parking or parallel parking, as you mentioned. I think that makes sense, but since we haven't done that yet, I had been wondering if, I couldn't recall if we had, just were letting them do it for now or something like that, because I've noticed that same issue. It's hard to see.
Yeah, certainly site triangle issues. I think this notion of having on-street gravel parking is, we've been working against that for 40 or 50 years, so we certainly don't want to take a step backward in that direction. But we hope to find a solution with the applicant and Councilmember Hickman to try to undo that problem and certainly not allow it to happen again on future projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beerman, and then Councilmember Hickman.
So one of, one of my questions was already answered. Thanks, Councilmember Holman. So my second question, maybe this is for Jane, is it, is it correct? We don't have any parking requirements for commercial establishments in Center City
That is correct.
Okay. So what happens? Are we just going to be kind of playing whack-a-mole and kind of putting out fires as needed if, you know, if we end up with a similar situation here where, you know, this is going to be an extremely popular bar, and people not from the neighborhood are going to want to come and visit this establishment, and where are they going to park?
Well, there's on-street parking for the areas. Well, there's on-street parking for the areas, you know, I think we've taken Apache and Sims and those are parking on one side of the street now, I believe. And then there will be other on-street parking opportunities. There's the county parking lot to the north across Yufalla, so they could probably utilize that after five. But again, going back to the intent of the Center City Form Based Code area was to create the walkability, reduce the number of cars, utilize public parking. And so we're, we are limited right now.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to think that it won't be a problem. I, I am concerned that it will be and I, you know, I hope that we can start to think now of what we're going to do when these extremely popular commercial establishments come in and we run out of places for people to park. Because I, I know we want to increase walkability and I'm all for that. I also know that there are people on the east side who like to come to Core Norman and spend time there as well, and they're going to need places to park. So, and, and not in ways that, you know, prevent Jane from being able to see out the left when she's pulling out or not have to worry about hitting the side mirror of a large pickup truck. It also brings to mind concerns about emergency vehicles getting down these streets if we have large vehicles even on one side of the street. So I, I would like us to start thinking about how we're going to address some of these problems because I do feel like some of them are going to come up.
Okay. Councilmember Hickman?
Sean, I just had a quick question for you and I don't want to go too far down this road, but I did want to, while we were talking briefly about this parking on the gravel up front, are we in a position to move forward with potentially allowing the parallel parking as depicted in the Form Based Code, I believe part of what you and I have discussed? And I know that we're talking about James Garner and road projects and down the road. And so I'm, kind of in fairness, I just, I want to make sure that I understand, you know, if the applicant or the city through TIF funds wanted to, you know, redo that James Garner stretch between Sims and Apache with all this development and make it comply with the Form Based Code for public spaces and, and public roadway and put in that, that parallel parking that I believe that's addressed in the Form Based Code. You know, are we as a city in a position where we know what we would want that to look like, where it maybe wouldn't have to be redone in five, 10, whatever years when we are doing the road project on this stretch? Or we, are we not quite there or, I mean, kind of?
Sure.
That's one of the questions and challenges, I think, in some of this discussion.
Sure. I appreciate that question and it's a good one, but no, we are absolutely in a position to, in fact, on, on the previous Garner Crossing project, we worked with this applicant to absolutely design that system for that project. And at one point he was seriously considering moving forward with that and later abandoned that option. But no, we are ready to do that and to work with the applicants. We have even talked with our staff team to try to put together perhaps a city-initiated sort of one-block example of what that would look like using TIF funds. And we actually have considered this block as maybe the place to do that because it's having more of this activity. We've identified the problem here and that is in this particular stage in Center City that we are not getting those block-type, block-size developers. We're getting one little parcel at a time and they just are not equipped to, to build continuous parallel parking for an entire block. They're only going one little parcel at a time. We understand that's a, that's a financial problem. So it might, in this case, in this, in this city, it might take the city building those right-of-way improvements for parking sidewalks and landscaping as part of the Center City TIF funding source and sort of stimulate that concept in other parts of Center City in the future. We, we think that's the direction we're headed. It's just not happening organically as we had hoped by the development community.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
We might just respond to that or just expand on that. And I think this would also be helpful to answer your question as well. One of the reasons why we, we didn't go forward with the parallel parking along James Garner is that there's about 400 lineal feet and the parallel parking would only address six parking spaces. And so what a number of the cities are doing now, and it's a very progressive and, and very successful way of addressing parking, and my, my family's from Chicago, my wife's family's from New York, and, and most of the kids I went to school with live in Austin now, and what they're doing is this reverse angled parking. And so you actually will, on something like James Garner, you drive by and you back into your spot. They're doing it now in Tulsa. And in an instance like that, you would be able to accommodate about 26 parking spaces and it would meet all the tri, the, the site triangles. And our development group was very pro this approach because it accommodated two different things. It addressed the parking concerns that we're having because I think everybody in this room kind of has realized the idea of if you take parking spaces away, the cars go away isn't a reality in the city of Norman. It might be a reality in downtown New York City, but, and even downtown Chicago or Wrigleyville. But when you have 35,000 commuter students who either live in Oklahoma City or Dallas Metroplex, everybody wants their vehicle so they can go home and wash the laundry. And so I, I think that we'd be more than willing and have expressed our willingness to find an approach that is progressive and modern and, and appeals to both the, the community and, and the concerns of, of parking. So I don't think, I, I wasn't willing to, to put my stamp on something that, that used 400 lineal feet of frontage for six spaces. I thought that was gross misuse and injustice to the city. So, but I, I am willing to, to look at the reverse and set and, and help fund that any way I can. So, thank you.
So Mr. O'Leary? I'm sorry, I wish you could just answer from your seat. But so would, would that design work on, is there enough?
Mayor, it would not work on James Garner with our future plans for improvements of that corridor, particularly in this area, because we have very limited right-of-way. So we've identified that problem particularly here on James Garner. I don't know if it would work on Apache or some of the side streets, but we're happy to explore that. That wasn't part of the proposal in Center City Form Based Code design options. We understand reverse parking. In fact, we've, we've offered it as an alternative on Main Street, on a recent Main Street project. And frankly, as you know, we got, we got some real negative feedback from our community about that concept. We, we thought it was a great idea too. We're, we're very familiar with that concept here, but it wasn't well-received by our citizens here in Norman, and I don't know that it would be in this application, but we're happy to explore it.
But that, that really won't work as we widen James Garner?
No, we, we really have so much, so limited of right-of-way here. In fact, we were even concerned with council a year ago on this, the previous project to actually put the stoops in the right-of-way because we thought we might actually have the stoops removed in the future road project. And so really concerned about our limited space and it all has to do with the railroad tracks being right across the street. We don't own that land. In fact, part of James Garner Avenue today is sitting on BNSF property. So we've got some challenges in this particular area.
Okay. That was kind of what I was remembering. So thank you.
Brenda. Oh, so.
Councilmember Casper?
I guess this question may be irrelevant, but we're not doing reverse parking. We just, we just kind of talked about it being a great idea, but we're not, we're not doing it.
No, sir. It's not been proposed on this site plan and I don't, I don't think we as a staff have the authorization to approve it.
Okay. But you also mentioned this would be something that we could do with, with, with TIF funding for this area.
Correct.
So I don't know if this is a question for you or for Anthony. How much, we don't have any TIF funding. I mean, we don't have any money in it, in account, do we?
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's part of our challenge and Mr. Bryant.
Not yet.
So we've thought that when we do have actual funding available, that that might be a, a good seed capital project for the city to initiate.
So you're, you're, you're down, this is a down-the-road type of thing?
Yeah, it, it could be, or as we've discussed, the TIF really is just a revenue stream.
Correct.
So if the revenue stream is documented to the point that a lender is comfortable enough to do the financing, then the idea is that you would go ahead and do the financing, get the money you'd need upfront and go ahead and make the improvements. And then that revenue stream then will pay back the financing, but you have to have the lender comfortable.
Correct.
But I think what Sean is talking about, this one or two blocks to do as an example of what the Center City Form Based Code could be and evolved to be, is probably well-placed with Mr. Petromelli's projects because he's doing some construction that's consistent with Center City Form Based Code. And then you can do those roadways so people can see this is what it's going to look like. Now, the, the parking issue is another one that, and Councilmember Holman will jump in on this, I'm sure, is another one that I think the committee struggled with. There's different ways that you can address that. One of those ways is structured parking. So council might recall that next week you're going to talk about, or hear some stuff about the Kemble Horn Parking Study and what's in store for that and whether there can be some branch off from that that might help accommodate some of the parking needs that are generated by Center City and still bring all the buildings close to the street so it's more walkable and you have less cars. Those cars are still there, but they're going to get tucked away in structured parking.
No, I like that idea. I was just trying to figure out from a, a timing standpoint because probably, well, next, in January, we'll get our first round, is it correct? We'll get our first round of TIF financing for Center City for the ad, one part of it? Or is another year out?
Should, could get the first payment next year.
In January of 19? Okay. I was thinking that we passed Center City.
Don't we get the first year?
Code.
Yeah, we'll double check that.
I always think we did a TIF and did the emergency deal so we could get it spread out there. So, okay, well, if we do get it, then I guess I, my question was if we do get it in January, we'll have an idea about what our revenue stream would be. We could start getting an idea of what that increment's going to be. It hadn't been a lot of activity there, so I don't anticipate it to be much, but, but I do like the idea of.
By my account, we've actually talked about perhaps bringing a design contract for council, not building it yet, but to actually explore the design concept, again, picking a block, an example block. And as Jeff indicated, our, our purpose here is to illustrate to folks what they're having a hard time seeing. Parallel parking is a good thing. You can fit lots of cars in to that space and, and it's really been the principle of the design concept in Center City that we're trying to illustrate here. So it might be something we can get started in a design stage in 2019 and then maybe have funding for construction in 2020.
Would this be a type of thing where the, the city could actually do it out of the capital fund and then maybe as a TIF loan?
Or just get the financing.
Well, I'm going to say, if, if you can't get the financing and that's the problem, you're not getting the financing, but if we wanted to do kind of a, a block that we could actually.
Exactly.
Have the capital fund loan the money, basically do the financing until we built up the revenue.
I think so.
Is that an option? I'm not saying it's a good option.
Sure. The capital fund can loan money to the Center City TIF fund.
Okay. That's what I thought we had.
We can charge an appropriate interest rate. I'm sure Anthony will be, be willing.
Very generous in his interest rate, yeah.
Or we can do it with private bank financing either way.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was an optional. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman has another comment? You have another question?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you?
Yes.
Okay. And then Councilmember Holman.
Sean, I do have another question for you, but Jane, well, Sean's coming back up here. I just wanted to say, I do want to put on the list, as we dust off the emails and the prior discussion about the consultant, that we also add on there to talk about the notice provision that Ms. Crumpley mentioned and how that's handled and the size of the sign and how that's done. So we do think that is a concern that I've heard from many residents. Sean, I just, for the, for context, as we've been talking about parking in the Center City deal, and to kind of make sure everybody has an understanding of the, of the scale of some of the challenges, right now across from the new Jam Restaurant, for example, there's parking that faces towards the railroad tracks.
Right.
My understanding is while it's not gravel, that is also all in some kind of a right-of-way. Is that right?
That's correct.
And as I've been told, I think across Main Street, like the Benvenides, some of their parking and things are, are in the right-of-way, right?
That is correct.
So as we move forward with this James Garner Road Project, assuming we do, and, and Center City initiatives, whether it's a year, five, 10, whatever down the road, we're going to have, we're going to be impacting parking, you know, on a broader scale than just in front of this, this current.
Absolutely.
This current block, right?
Correct. That's correct. And many of it in pre-existing businesses that, that need it, frankly.
Yeah. And so that's where I think the discussion about the structured parking and the county, I think, efforts that they're discussing to put a parking garage in the downtown area, you know, could lead to the, the situation where we maybe do have people from East Norman coming downtown and parking in a parking garage, you know, maybe by the, over by the county, then walking across Main Street or Yufalla Street to get to the other side of the tracks to where these developments are happening in Center City. Is that kind of what?
Exactly right. And as you know, Councilmember, part of the message you'll hear next week with the rollout of the parking plan, the Phase Two, is, you know, what we've learned over the years, we have plenty of parking in downtown and Campus Corner is just not in the right place. There's plenty of numbers. There's plenty of parking spaces. If you add them all up and all the parcels, it's just not where people want them to be. And so the structured parking is the answer to that, to place the structured parking structures in the places where people want to drive to park and get to some other commercial or retail business.
All right. Thanks, Sean.
You bet.
Councilmember Holman?
Quick. So based on this conversation tonight, is the plan for James Garner Avenue from Main Street South to be a three-lane street?
Yes, sir. It is, well, two-lane, two, two functioning lanes and then a third lane at, at intersections, which effectively sort of by the time you transition between some of these closely spaced intersections becomes a three-lane configuration. You can kind of see the makeup of that today at James Garner and Acres.
Because right now, it's, you know, it's maybe not even two lanes wide really, but, you know, there's plenty of right-of-way right now in front of this proposed development. But if, I can see where if we're making it three lanes, there won't be any at all. So I just wasn't sure.
As a general rule, again, just for the sake of discussion, a general rule, we're, we're looking for about 100 feet of right-of-way to fit roads and, and legacy trail paths and utilities, moving utilities out and so on. And that's what we needed just north of here at, at, at James Garner and Acres, and, and we're just fitting it in there barely. The same will be true in this location and we risk are short of that here because of, it's a long history of, of land acquisition relative to BNSF roadway, but it's something we have to work through at this location.
Thank you.
Sure. So there, when you come off of Acres and you look down from the second floor of the library, you, you can see the, the way it's going to look exactly with the turn lanes. There's a median as well.
That's correct. And that's, that's our hope.
It's going to be a median all the way, so that takes up extra space.
Exactly. We hope to have a, a divided two-lane road essentially, yes, with a, with a raised median.
And it looks great from up there.
Thank you. It's coming together. Thank you, Mayor.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Same sign? That was unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Things are all messed up.
They're all messed up?
Yeah, mine's not active.
Okay. I'm sorry. What?
It says my panel is not active.
So you don't get to talk?
I've got all the.
I want to vote. The buttons are.
The buttons.
The yes.
So moved.
Second. Question?
This is the final, final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. If it doesn't work, we'll do it by hands.
Bria? Try it now. I had to take you out when you left.
If you said you voted yes. It worked. Does everybody have a panel that you can vote on? Okay. 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 All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes So we got through the first item on the off-consent. Item 51 is an ordinance amending the code to change the section title to Communication Facilities, adding definitions and updating related terminology, clarifying language applicable to commercial communication towers and television and radio transmission towers, and adding regulations related to small cell wireless facilities. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you, Catherine Walker for the legal department. That's right. I'm here to talk to you about small cell wireless facilities. We've talked quite a bit about this in committees and so we're finally bringing the ordinance forward to council.
Thank you, Catherine Walker, for the legal department. That's right. Here to talk to you about small cell wireless facilities. We've talked quite a bit about this in committees, and so we're finally bringing the ordinance forward to council. Essentially, small cell facilities is a new technology being proposed by cell phone providers and infrastructure providers for the rights of way for an enhanced cellular network and data download speeds. As you all know, the cities and cell service providers across the state worked together on a bill to address the issues that these might present in the city's right of way, and that resulted in Senate Bill 1388, which was adopted in April. The FCC recently issued a ruling in September about cities and how they review these small cell facility applications, and so that's had some impact on this ordinance. So this is what we're talking about. This is fairly small technology, I think no larger than six cubic feet in diameter, placed on top of poles. You can see kind of how they're incorporated into existing light poles there. The thing about small cell technology is it has a great ability to provide capacity that cell phone towers, the large towers you see, can't provide. But because they're smaller and they only reach a 1,500-foot radius, there's less flexibility for locations. But they are better able to blend into their surroundings compared to cell phone towers, and then they can improve capacity in a very targeted way. And the most important thing, I think, for our citizens is this paves the way for 5G technology. Federal law expresses a very strong preference to grow the cellular network capacity, and you see that in their rules that they issue through the FCC. But there is a very strong preference to make way for this technology and for cities not to stand in the way of that. And so with this recent FCC ruling, we have some ability to regulate specific aspects, but other items have been addressed through these rulings to make sure that cities aren't slowing the expansion down. This was also similarly reflected in the state bill, the Oklahoma Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act. This applies to co-location of small wireless facilities by wireless provider in the right of way and deployment of new utility poles to support those facilities. The ordinance that you have before you attempts to strike a balance between the recent FCC ruling and the state law, there were a couple of key differences. And so where necessary, I've adjusted some things in our ordinance to make sure we're complying with both federal and state law. This amends Section 431.2 of the zoning ordinance, which dealt primarily with larger communication towers. It would allow small cells as a permitted use in all zoning categories, but of course, they have to comply with all building codes, FAA regulations, et cetera. And this is especially important when you talk about co-location and adding facilities to existing poles. It's really important to ensure that we have the engineering that shows that those can be added safely and that they won't interfere with other devices on the poles or in the area. And so we are talking about two types of installations, like the state law provided, co-location on existing poles or new poles. Permit applications, you can submit up to 25 facilities on one permit. It's $200 for the first five facilities and $100 for each additional facility on the same application. That complies with state and federal law. If modified, if a modified replacement or new pole is required, the price goes up a little bit because it requires a different kind of analysis. The shot clock is the subject of many FCC rulings on cell phone or cellular technology. That's one of the ways that they were getting complaints that cities were delaying these applications is by taking so long to review them. And so the shot clock here is a pretty quick turnaround. You have to determine the application is complete within 20 days, and then you have to have the final determination on the co-location applications within 60 days and 75 days for the new modified or replacement poles. There is a difference here between federal and this recent FCC ruling and state law, and so this 75 days is different from what you'll find in the state law, but it complies with federal law. And it doesn't run afoul of state law. It just doesn't match state law. If you deny an application, the applicant has the option to cure any deficiencies within 30 days, or they can appeal to the Board of Adjustment like any other zoning ordinance determination. Siding and aesthetics, as were a big concern of the cities when we were dealing with the cellular companies to negotiate the Senate bill, new or modified poles cannot be more than the greater of 10 feet taller than the tallest existing pole within 500 feet as of November 1st, that's the effective date of the state law, or 50 feet above ground level. New facilities cannot exceed 10 feet above an existing utility pole. So if you're attaching a new facility to an existing pole, it cannot go more than 10 feet above that pole. Something we've added is that new facilities and related poles cannot interfere with vehicular access to adjacent property or be placed in a location that would interfere with an existing individual tree canopy, and that was based on feedback that we received at the committee level. And then the size limitations, I mentioned this briefly, the small cell antenna must fit in an enclosure of no more than six cubic feet in volume, and the associated equipment cannot exceed 28 cubic feet in volume. State law and federal law both allow cities to enact some concealment criteria. The key here is that they're applied equally to all providers. There was, there's a big discussion in the FCC ruling about favoritism and making sure you treat everyone the same. And so what we've put in here is that they must be designed to blend in as much as possible with the surrounding area and with the pole that it's being affixed to. This is particularly important on decorative light poles. So we've added language in there that they must be concealed within the pole, all the equipment, to the maximum extent possible. One of the earlier pictures gave a good example of how that can be achieved, where the small cell antenna blends into the pole, and then you don't see any of the ancillary equipment. And then no new pole for a small cell facility if it's, if there is, if it is proposed to be located within a 500-foot radius of an existing pole. And the purpose of this is really to make sure that we're encouraging co-location where possible, so that we're not just having a bunch of new poles put up, but that these facilities are sharing poles if it's possible to do so to address the low spots in their capacity. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council questions? Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
If we say no to the ordinance? We would, well, they could probably still proceed under state law, but that would certainly put staff in an awkward position because we would need to be able to review those applications. The reason we felt it important to do an ordinance rather than just use the state law so that we could put some of those regulations in there about siding, so you don't have too many of them, and concealment. Without this ordinance, we are not able to control any of that.
Okay. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Any comments from the public? Final comments from the council? Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. That was unanimous. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. Our votes to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously. Solanias, this is an opportunity for the citizens to address the council as a whole, and comments should be limited to five minutes.
I'm asking, I guess, for some clarification. I have the site distance triangle part of the ordinance from the city. I'm not a traffic engineer, but from what I read, that prop, that, the parking on the corner of Sims and James Garner violates that. So I guess what I heard was that staff or city staff were aware or were aware that they're parking illegally in the right of way, and the city manager ordered them not to take any action, not to tow or whatever. I knew it was illegal to park in the right of way because we've had houses on Elm sometimes that were overoccupied, so they parked between the curb and the sidewalk, and they got ticketed because that's in the right of way, and they can't park there. This is a dangerous intersection. I know what you're going to tell me, don't go that way, go some other way. But, you know, I'm not the only one that's traveling. I have unofficially asked a couple of police officers that I know unofficially chief what their opinion is, and they agree, you can't see. So I, where do we go from here? We just leave it as it is until sometime we get another consultant in to do whatever, and it just stays that way?
We'll look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Andy Rogers, 633 Reed Avenue, still. I just have a follow-up on Jane's question. Do we know what the accidents have been like there? And does this open the city up to some liability if somebody really gets hurt because the city isn't enforcing its own safety regulations? So I think I'd like to know what that means about that.
Robert Husky, 3615 Chatham Court Ward 3. I wish to acknowledge that the city council, through its actions today, seems to have taken a really solid step towards the building of a senior center standalone, and I applaud you for your efforts. I was, I've been hoping all along that I might be able to enter those doors in something other than a casket. Thank you.
Or Swim Club? I have a statement and then a question. I'll keep it as brief as I can. First of all, there was talk tonight about possibly earmarking some funds for a land acquisition for the senior center. And I might be understanding the situation differently, but I had thought that the will of the people included in that package a standalone aquatic center or a sports center, and that that was already earmarked, whereas money for a senior center, the plan was to renovate, to create a senior center, not acquire land. Again, my concern is that I feel like it's kind of rolling down on the ladder of importance. And lastly, I'll finish that up with, what progress have we made since the last meeting where we, I think we came to the consensus that the OU plan was not a timely or not smart, but a plan that was looking like it would work? And we had decided, yes, there was a need. Yes, the vote of the people was that we should acquire this with the money that we had taxed. And what progress have we made on that? Thank you.
Super. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the council. Matt Ball with CMA Strategies out of Oklahoma City, here tonight representing Bird Rides, the electric scooter company. Just wanted to simply say, with respect to item 23, which was adopted tonight, Bird is current, has been in talks with and the city attorney's office and others on city staff about the agreement, coming to an agreement. We have just a couple of minor concerns. I think Bird's council has some concerns about some of the indemnification provisions and just how it's worded, some minor provisions. And we have shared those, I think, concerns with the council's office and hope to come to an agreement that we can bring before you at the December meeting. I know, I think there are other operators that also have some concerns about that particular language, but just wanted to make you aware of that, keep you up to speed on that, out of a courtesy to you. But again, I appreciate your time. We really appreciate the city staff's efforts that they have put together on putting, on putting that agreement together. We just have a couple of minor concerns that we hope to have worked out here very, really, honestly, I hope by the end of this week is our, is our, is our hope. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
I don't really have a whole lot to say tonight. I want to thank everyone who came out to express their thoughts about the proposed changes to our animal ordinances. I thought the discussion was really comprehensive, got a lot of feedback, and I'm going to be looking forward to seeing what the Animal Welfare Oversight Committee does with those comments at their meeting in December. I am looking to schedule my second ward meeting, talk mostly about stormwater and the transportation bond, looking like probably the second week of December. Since I already had one, I'm, you know, trying to defer to some of the other council members who have them scheduled so that I can be judicious with staff's time. This last one was on a Friday. I'm going to try and hold one on a weekend and just see if I can grab a different crowd. Of course, childcare will be offered as usual. And I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I got to stay here and hang out with some of my council family's family, and the only bad thing about that was I didn't get any leftovers. So no turkey cranberry sandwiches or turkey soup for me, but we had a wonderful weekend, and I'm just really thankful for my council family. So thanks, everyone.
Just briefly to kind of address your deal, about $7.6 million that we set aside for the senior center, part of that could be for the land acquisition, which would entail all three, the standalone, the standalone aquatic center, the multisport, and the senior center, if we do the north base property. So, and we just have a difference in price, I think, between OU. If we're willing to swap the land plus a difference in cash, which we now have the ability to do, then that is something that could proceed very quickly. So we have not forgot about you. And so there's a little bit more to it, but that's just kind of the quick answer. We're going to go into executive session, so I want to make sure we were able to address your issue with, and not have you waiting around for a little bit. So nothing else, really?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier, and I'll add on to it, that we have some items coming up that could be being sent to the ballot for consideration of our residents, being a transportation bond, a stormwater bond, and maybe a stormwater utility. I propose some ideas to address some of the concerns involving the Norman Ford projects, like the indoor aquatic center, indoor sports facility, the senior center, to where we could utilize some of the funds for the transportation bond to acquire the property. Those funds, coupled with the potential $7 million, $7.6 million freed up from the Griffin Park long-term lease versus acquisition, could create an actionable plan to ensure that a standalone senior center and the land for the Norman Ford projects are secured. And I'm committed to make sure, to do our best to ensure that we do have an actionable plan in place before the voters would vote on these measures that we'd send to the ballot for them to consider, because I think that's important to fulfill the public trust on the items that they've already voted on for us to do, including the senior center and these two Norman Ford projects. So I'm hopeful that as the, over the next month or so, as things try to come together, hopefully will come together, that we will have an actionable plan to ensure that we can secure the land for those Norman Ford projects, or secure locations where we're going to put them, as well as secure the land or location for the senior center and the funding for the senior center, since it does not have funding. And as you're aware, there is not funding in the Norman Ford bond package for the land acquisition, and so we have to solve that problem as well, or find a site for them, for those projects. Announcement-wise, I just wanted to mention one thing. This Friday, November 30th, is the tree lighting out here at Andrews Park. I do encourage everybody to please come out I do encourage everybody to please come out and celebrate and be a part of that wonderful festivity. I will be there helping to bring the tree lighting to life. There will be Kellers and other wonderful people out helping to celebrate. And so I do encourage everybody to come downtown to Andrews Park, right here behind the municipal complex, and celebrate our holiday tree lighting and enjoy the rest of your evening in downtown Norman, do some shopping, and enjoy some of our wonderful restaurants. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Friday, the most exciting thing ever is going to happen. Ken Kaminski, are you still here? Thank you so much. We are getting a recycling center on the east side at the East Side Library, and there'll be a ribbon cutting. I think Mayor Miller's going to be there. I think Councilmember Beerman, myself, maybe this group over here. We are going to dance in the streets. Now, we're going to bring our recycling efficiently, including glass, to the East Side Recycling Center on Friday at noon. I'll see y'all there.
Councilmember Clark.
I am having a ward meeting on December 2nd at the 12th Avenue Rec Center at 2:30 PM. We will have some light refreshments, and childcare will also be provided. I'm very interested in hearing my wards' feedback, specifically on the funding structure. I've made it clear that I would support the stormwater bond and utility going forward because it's time. I campaigned on that in 2016, so I'm ready to make some progress on that, and I'm grateful for all of the input and hard work that the Stormwater Citizens Committee has put in to get us to where we are today. It's also Giving Tuesday. We have a lot of amazing nonprofit organizations in our community, and there's still time left to join in on that. We did a glorious video, that's right, she's got money, where we adopted three children from the CCFI family wish list and challenged the Cleveland County Commissioners to adopt some children from the Citizens Advisory Board Santa Wish List. So hashtag Seasons Givings. And while we're talking about seasons and fun stuff, the Christmas parade is coming up Saturday, December 8th, and it'll be another evening parade. The lights should be really, really pretty, so bundle up. Hopefully, we'll get some good weather. It should be a fun night, one of my favorite Norman traditions. One of the great things about Norman is our parades on Main Street, for sure. So thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Oh, wait, one more thing. I wanted to apologize for dipping out there for a minute. It's my son's first band concert tonight, so I quickly went to the Nancy O'Brien Performing Arts Center and then came back for voting. So I apologize.
Councilmember Holman.
I just want to thank everybody watching at home and everybody here in the audience that has sat through this meeting with us and observed our local government in action. I would mention, I am tentatively trying to have a Ward 7 meeting town hall next week on the 6th, but I am also aware that Ward 2 and 4 may also be doing one on the 6th. And so when they figure out what they want to do, I will, I might move mine, just so that we can get as many people to all these as possible. The Ward 7 meeting will be held at the Reeves Center at Reeves Park. It's a city-owned facility on the corner of Jenkins and Constitution. It is a potential site for the standalone senior center. So I wanted to have a meeting there so people could come and physically see what the setting looks like at Reeves Park and the location and everything. It, in my opinion, would be the fastest and least expensive option for us to do a standalone senior center. If we want to get it done now, that would be the best way for it. We already own the land, there's no flood plain or FEMA issues there. We have two proposed transportation improvement projects in the upcoming transportation bond on Jenkins and Constitution that would help address any traffic generation from that. It is not my ideal location where I'd want to put a senior center, but it is, again, the quickest and the least expensive of the options if we want to go that route. So part of the meeting will be dedicated to anybody interested in knowing more about that option to come and check it out. We are going to be talking about stormwater, we're going to be talking about the transportation bond, and we'll be talking about CART and the future of our public transportation system in Norman. Those will be the primary topics that I'll be wanting to talk about, but of course, anybody that has any other topic that you'd like to discuss will be welcome, of course, and you do not have to be a Ward 7 resident to attend. I welcome everybody. So I will keep everybody posted on any change to the date on that as soon as I can. So other than that, though, again, I appreciate everybody, and we'll look forward to next time. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott.
Hello. Thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for watching at home. Hi, Kaylin. My husband's watching. Everyone say hi to my handsome husband. Anyway, before I forget, on next Friday, December 7th, is Winterfest in the University North Park from 5:30 to 7:30. Councilmember Clark says it's a lot of fun, so I believe her, and I'm going to try to attend. Since the semester is wrapping up, I should be able to go and do whatever I want from now on, on the weekends, so instead of locking myself away in the library and studying for 20 hours. On that note, on Sunday, I will also be hosting a ward meeting at Fire Station 7 from 1:30 to 3:00. So if you want, you can come over to Fire Station 7, and I'm going to have some light refreshments. We are going to be discussing some of the same items that have already been discussed down the line here. We're all just very redundant, which is a good thing, because we want to beat it into everybody's brain that we're talking about stormwater. And I also want to talk about the I-35 corridor study, because many of those projects are going to be in Ward 8. And they're on Robinson and I-35, and then Indian Hills and Rock Creek, all of that is very, is partial to us. And then also short-term rentals, which we discussed tonight at the oversight meeting. So I want to get some feedback from my residents on that, and then I can always relay those to the rest of council. And that's about all I got tonight. Thank you.
Does the city manager have a report? I do not, Mayor, but thank you for asking. Okay. All right. I do not have any miscellaneous comments. I think everything's been said. I would encourage everyone out there, go to one of these ward meetings, let us hear what you have to say about stormwater and a stormwater bond and a stormwater utility. It's really important for our community. This brings us to item 53, adjourning into executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes, Title 25, and Norman City Charter, Article 3, Section 6, to continue discussion initiated on August 21st, 2018, of whether or not to direct the city manager to investigate the city attorney. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of city council meeting and convene into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Motion on the floor is to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into executive session. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. We will take a 10-minute break, and then everybody needs to be in their seated.